We have, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Well, I think we're going to be just correct me, are we going to recommend a second executive session or the first half committee meeting, the first half committee meeting? I do, I do leave so to go over the reviewing.
Or do you want to do the agenda meeting?
No, because Joe, we are made the, and if, I don't think the meeting will take more than 10 minutes. It's, the fact is, we are not able to discuss the performance of the employees in a public meeting. We need to do that in executive session. And we need to have the board's review of the performance in order to base, to base the rate increase motions and the sick and vacation leave motions. So that is just a formality more than anything, but I think we need to take that step.
Okay, so where do you want to put it? Executive session after parks committee?
Anthony. Joe, come back.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Oh, one other thing. Well, when I make, when we make the motion to go into the executive session, there is also going to be a topic on the private pay performance that we need to discuss in executive session also.
Okay. All right, so have a motion to, to accept the agenda as amended?
Amendment.
Right. Any further discussion? Not all favor say aye, opposed? So we have two minutes today. This is, this is the regular one, which is got on the agenda first. So are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the Monday, December 3rd, 2020?
I think, I think.
I think there are none. Somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I move to accept the December 3 minutes.
Do you want a second?
Okay.
Thank you, second. Any further discussion? If not, all favor say aye, opposed? Okay. Good. And now we have the budget meeting, which was November 28th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections still open? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Do you second? Okay, second. All favor say aye, opposed? Okay. Unfortunately, it was brought to my attention that everybody signed the traffic ordinance, but it was never voted on.
Did you commit it on the, on the 7th? And since it was moved by me and then second, it was then to adopt the proposed ordinance with these changes.
If there are no changes, somebody just make a motion to accept the change. The proposed change, then that will be all set. It's all been signed, just there's no official.
That's a good catch. So.
Right. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Okay, opposed? All right, so now we approve the traffic ordinance officially approved. Budget discussion, Kim, do you want to read us here what we want, or do you want to read them?
Did everybody get a copy of the, the new sheet of expenditures and a new sheet of revenue? It was printed on 1212.
Yeah.
Okay. So there was a couple of changes that I have made on it. One of them was truck number two, which brought to my attention, and I talked to Mike and John about that, because truck number two is now a brand new one. We originally had budgeted 6,500 for repairs. It probably isn't going to use that much. You got it down to 2,000. The board's okay on that. Professional auditors, I had to make the last payment to the auditors, which brought me to check out what we spent on them. We spent 17 this year. So that brought me to check their contract. They did contact us with 17,000. I had our own budget 16. So I had to change that. Yes, because our next year they're going to be 17, if not more. Then on the highway, when I had calculated their, their salaries, I had calculated their salaries with a 3% on their actual hourly rather than a 3% at the end of the year. So their actual total all salary comes to 177 in their column. So from 182 down to 177, which makes their cap look a lot better. So those are the three changes I made. Anybody had any other changes?
Yeah, I mean, Mike, this, this would be the final, I mean, we could have another meeting, but if there are any other changes or suggestions, this would be the time to do it. So then Ken, Ben can start to compare the town report and all that.
So on page six, you'll see where the highway, total of the highway goes last year that we budgeted 737, 950. This year we're budgeting 737, 83. Total for the all, both general and the highway, last year was 1,002, 1307. This year we're budgeting 1,002, 0820. But like I talked with John, and we're not sure because where we are in this budget right now, if we're within that line in 1.213, we could be off, but there's no way of knowing that.
I think it's incredible really to have level spending from a year that has been so volatile and under deflation. It seems to me the town is going to be respecting this budget.
And I think, I think that there's also the hope that Hardy is, he's not sure, but he's, he thinks there might be an increasingly grand list, so that would further reduce the amount. And I guess the school is going to go down. So that's the way I hope also for the residents.
I, I did have, Kim, I just want to make sure, since we're going to have a discussion about rate increases part of our person off committee tonight, the 177, does that take into consideration any possible rate increases?
It, it's a possible rate increase for just, for these, I know talk has been, so I did do the $1, but that's, and the 177, it actually comes in under 177. I rounded up to the 177 in case there's any other changes. Did the same thing in the administration for Morgan, knowing that, you know, she's still going to have her reviews too and increases.
Perfect. Yeah. Okay. And then the other thing, I know that we changed the retreatment budget to 118. And part of the rationale for that, just to double check, is that we, if we don't spend that much, we can put the balance in the reserve.
It would be easier to, to say, to, to the public, it's more transparent to say we're moving the retreatment line item to the reserve, like we have in the past, rather than taking it from somewhere else and saying we'd like to reserve it. That would just call for another article. And we got to the 118, we always have been 105. We took 3,000 from bridges, moved it to make it 108, and then decided to take the extra 10 that we were going to put salt and move back to the treatment.
So our spending can be fungible. We can move that around, but the reserve needs to be transparent, come out of that.
Exactly. Okay.
I like the way you moved the annual control number out of the dog expenses.
Yeah, John. Yes?
Yeah. Well, one more thing, Kim, you let him brought up the town president, town clerk. I think instead of just 5,000 in, you're going to put 10,000 in.
Ah, John, that's a very good point. We haven't decided that yet, but an anticipation of it. Wow, John, thank you.
All, all you've got now to cover is the first 2,000.
Now, if we do that, that takes it up to exactly equal, at the level funding at 213.
It's, it's the take it on the left is right.
Yeah, if you're on the left is right, yeah.
It's, I think you're very close. Is away. That is the plus 5,000.
Yeah.
If I put 1,400, it's 1,000.
Yeah. Thank you, John.
Have you had any more changes or additions or questions? Right, are you all settled?
Yeah.
If, if not, somebody want to make a motion to accept the proposed budget?
I move to accept the proposed budget.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion? That was the time. If not, all favor say aye, opposed? Okay. All right, Kim, so then we can go with that now.
So the revenue sheet, just so everybody understand the revenue sheet, how that works. Again, how, how we keep those numbers. What I do is, it's just an estimate of what comes in every year. We don't have a whole lot of sale or what we're going to get in. It's kind of a guessing game. How much am I going to get for dog license? Many people are going to license their dog. But historically, you kind of go across the, the board and do it that way, do what happens throughout the years, what we're going to get for interest. I tend to like to budget on the low side when it comes to revenue coming in, and that way there if we get that shot, it's, it just helps us out. So I, everything but the property tax, when I'm actually working on this worksheet, I keep that at a zero. That's the very first line item. Then I plug in everything I anticipate coming in for revenue. When I get that total, I subtract it from what you saw on your expenditure, and the remainder means that's what we have to collect in taxes. And then I plug that into the top number again, up there that you see of the 887 or 91. And once that gets plugged in, the bottom number on the second page has to match the expenditure on the expenditure side. And you can see the tax, property tax needed to be collected is less than it was budgeted last year. That suits a good sign. It'll change a little bit, which we just made that.
Yeah. So now the total revenue will be, need to be something like 1, 2, 1, 3?
Yeah.
Okay.
The revenue, you don't need to do anything.
All right.
Let's do it.
Can I say that again?
We need the seven days for the three time meeting. I have written the, the report for the town that we eat, our department, and we need it for the papers so we can get it in there so that everybody will know when the county and town members.
So it can be between February 25th and March 6th?
We, I said it to be in the town meeting, so that I do it on March 6th. Thank you. Actually, that's, that's the second thing. That's first Monday of the month, right? March 6th. There goes the March 1st.
It is. That's the first Monday.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't want to have it, that goes to town meeting.
I think I do the W. Do you do?
That would leave you, that would be the 27th then? That's a Monday, Monday, the 27th or Tuesday, there's only eight.
You want it in the first?
What's better for the town? What, when can, for people more available on Monday or Friday?
I, I don't think it's going to make much difference. I think Friday is a bad day. But I think about Monday, Tuesday.
The, see, I'm thinking the planning commission's the third, right? The third Tuesdays. So we're safe there, because that would be the four. Tiana's on the Wednesday.
The only hangup would be if the school has, it has an issue.
Yeah, you'd have to check with the school on the 28th on Tuesday. I would think Tuesday would be a better day than Monday.
I agree.
We wouldn't be able to have that three time meeting here in town?
Here? Oh, we, what, you limit to 50 people here? I'd rather have here, but I don't think we can. I mean, construction will be complete, but.
You just, you can't predict how many are going to come.
I mean, but it's going to be on Zoom. That, that, some, some people can, they might not, you know, want to come personally. They can, but you know, expense will be changing. Probably there'll be a candidate storm, I would imagine.
And then don't forget, we share it with the school, so you have a minimum supervisor and usually they send four, five members of these to speak on the, you know, high school. I'm a supervisor, so.
Can we set the date and let the date decide where I should be in case, I don't know, just.
Yeah, I can check with the school.
You know, I don't mean that. I mean, you can set it with a date, but not set the dates until the following.
Now you have, you pretty much have to post it. Especially if you have, when you're this long.
conditionally than at the school.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so the 28th is that it?
If the school's available. If not, maybe we can check with the 27th as the second option.
Yeah. Do we need a motion for that? Back to town? Yeah. So let's make a motion to, somebody make a motion to do it on either the 28th or the 27th, depending on availability of the school. Preferably the 28th.
John?
First, what do you, because it's actually set to come in. Kathy made a motion second. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. And the, the town meeting is set as March 7th, so you could not issue there. John, my word report, does have anything? Right?
We can solve your signs for your, your change, your, your sign ordinance there. The only one we're waiting on clarity is down in Cambridgeport. What are we doing there? Are we following through with what you originally suggested?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you could put any sign you have put up, because the shirt said, if not, that's what the jam of the lines.
Okay. Were you guys going to notify Athens? Amber had mentioned it before. Before we do that, do we want, or do you want me to just put the signs up and?
Yeah.
That out? Okay.
We decided at last meeting that Amber could go ahead and inform Athens, even though we have, or what?
What ones you missing then?
Um, did the stop sign at the bridge. So we're going to put that stop sign, we're removing the yield and removing the stop sign from the Athens side. That was the plan?
That's good.
The banker's there, he's got to put the sign. 15 minutes and we're done.
John, what do you think about putting that stop sign up on the bridge without the lines?
Well, the, the shirt said it would make any difference, whether they were there or not, you would go ahead and put it on. Yeah, I don't know when that would be the line is up. If it made that fatal, that's great. That's the only thing.
While we're in, that, that sign?
No, it's the sign at the other back side of the garden.
That's it.
And new truck is here, so we have that reason there. And the snowstorm was pretty much uneventful, other than a lot of hours and a lot of trees. We'll be cleaning up trees probably in the next couple of days. I don't know. Might be good.
They put the lines back up.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. I asked Hardy, I hope those is not fed from that.
Really?
That, that line only feeds the school, Temple Schoolhouse, Walter Bizarro's old house, and that's about it. So that's where they kind of lost it. That's where they got the power. Just maybe the suburbs are just going to.
I, I did get a call from Tiana from Green Mountain Power this afternoon, just to touch base. She's kind of like their coordinator to see if we had any concerns. So I do have her cell phone number if any concerns come up in the next few days because of everything going on. And I did tell her about 121, the wire hanging there, that select board members have been in, and the road crew, and why is it hanging there? She said it shouldn't be hanging there. And she was going to get somebody on it.
One down here by Lenny Bizarro's laying on the guardrail.
Okay, then speak up, and I'll give Morgan the number she called.
They fixed it.
But it's still laying there?
No, they fixed it.
Oh, okay.
But it was there. I mean, it had been lodged, and we fixed the guardrail.
There is a tree on the wires up on Acre Brook, and I don't think they're ever going to move that until the last thing.
Yeah.
The log, the log truck can't, they told me that.
Okay.
They turned around like that, and it's all.
Our home getting tomorrow.
Maybe move the other one.
Yeah, I see that.
So is that something you want Tiana to?
They could just bring to their attention.
No, I think that it's, it's not the wire, but it hasn't broken the wire, which it is down lower, so they, they can't get it really there. So I feel lose that, you know, be very last thing if they move it.
She mentioned many more outages that have been, somebody said there was a handful of outages that will be recovered this evening, but there may be a few individuals out there that might still be in the room for another day or so.
It's Wendy, by the way. I just looked at their map, and it looks like everything's back to normal in Grafton. All the outages are done, um, gone, whatever. Powers are.
Yeah.
Any other? No, that's pretty much it.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment. I think that road crew did a great job in terms of handling this major storm, and they also were able to plow the village park driveway at the end of the storm, as we had agreed they would do. And I just want to thank them for that and thank the select board for approving that, because it turns out that with the snow accumulation the way it is now, it provides our townspeople the opportunity to use that park, because they can take their car parking at the trailhead and go hiking from there. And I just think that's real benefit. That's why the village park is there. So take your snow shoes and drive to the trailhead. It's really a great asset to the town.
I don't know what day it was, but the schools here too, obviously. I rose here. Soon as I went over to Sacramento, it took me forever to get to 91. Big difference.
You've done an excellent job. I use it on practice.
Kim, can I ask a question? Did you get any calls? Do people have, have any concerns about people?
No, I was here all day Friday, right up till 3:00, just after 3:00. I didn't get any phone calls. My phone rang twice.
So there was no need to open this up for a morning?
No, I had brought it up this morning, because I was, I came in Saturday morning, because I got on Facebook, I didn't lose power, but on Facebook I heard the church didn't have it and was considering moving. So I ran up here assuming, oh my God, we don't have power. Need to put the generator up in the post office, and they replied, we were fine here. So everything was so sporadic. And then I thought people were still out. And then I asked John and Joe this morning, you know, what do we do for people? Because I saw everybody's posting Chester and London, Lublo, performing children. There wasn't a need. Nobody reached out here anyways.
And so there this year this morning, the chief called a friend in Hommeville, was very concerned about that. They had power, so.
Yeah, nobody called.
Well, I would think that we have emergency management, and because of temperatures and the fact that the roads were, we were freezing, you know, power. I'm just concerned about people checking certain people.
And see, I'm not sure who coordinates that, because I mean, the emergency management as well, who was on the town. So who follows up if he's not around?
Who's the assistant? You know?
Well, that's really, I don't think Ellen is any longer. So we were talking about this in session here, but Eric is coordinating, it says in the document, 4. I don't remember the answer.
Kathy makes a good point. The power's out, phones don't work.
Right, that's probably.
Yeah, they can't, you have to go door to door. And I don't know if the rest, because it has a list of folks that are on oxygen. I mean, that's, that's what they're going to talk about. So I'm just wondering what's up. I mean, we delivered the deacons baskets and some of these folks are way out there. One of the deacon gentlemen, he noticed it's there, but I didn't, I couldn't find him in the house. But I, I did find him, but I was worried where he was.
Apparently looking at the, it was listed, there is no.
A second one. Right, because Al said no. So it builds.
We need to look at, we need to talk to Bill or something, like it's. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Ken, do you have anything on the truck, or are you done?
I'm not done.
Okay. Committee reports, cemetery committee, there's really nothing.
No, I think we'll just, I had Morgan send Ted Mueller, another letter, urge him to step in there. We haven't, they haven't talked that, give your team a little.
Just so everybody understands, we asked Tim all the once before to support him to land, and he refused. So we thought we'd give it another shot, since it is active now. The land is still set. Hold that. And we were holding a party, a maker. It was a reminder, call that a maker, which is Jason to the cemetery. But we'll see what happens. Anyway, I guess there's nothing to our right now. Parks, there's not one. Okay, now we go executive session, right? So somebody make a motion to go into executive sessions?
Yeah. Well, I made a motion to go into executive section, or section 313, section 313, but that's ready. And the purpose of the executive session is to discuss the performance of Colby Record and Norgan Wilbur, and also that highway team.
Wait a minute. Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye, opposed? Okay.
216. And then the fold date. For the fact sent to the 32 weeks, within five days, the division, 22, and on half a day, it's, it's the others. I want, just to be clear, so you're clear how to provide that. And that's what we just did in executive session, approving the increases for those who are in, for the extra.
That was what the deal was, anyway.
Yeah, we had, we had discussed it way back a couple, three weeks ago in November. And, but we didn't vote on it.
No, I, I don't.
At least good, because now you know, that's why if somebody's that adds.
Right.
As an employer.
Yeah, go here.
Somebody that's ready to add.
From this, again, just the information, clarifying, there's no changes in the power company that happened. And it is also checking, yeah, so it's not bad.
So you need a motion for this?
Yes. So let me just, first of all, make a correction. When we, Kim conferred with Michelle, who does the actual.
When we, Tim conferred with Michelle Dahl, who does the actual calculation of vacation leave. And it turns out that we do not have to separate the probationary period at one rate from the, the employment, regular employment period at $24 per hour. It will off, if the vacation takes place in 2023, which it most likely will, because it's unlikely Michael approved vacation in December, right? Then it will be at the new rate of $24 per hour. And we're not gonna let Morgan take vacation in the first week of January, the reasons will come up with it. Kathy, did you already go over Morgan and what we need to do there on her vacation as sick leave?
Yes.
We, yeah, that was during the probationary, but he did, he did ask, Morgan did ask about the March vacation. And that's fine. He left the board on the night about a previously planned vacation in March of 23. And to have the time off. And we all agreed on that. I think the important thing is that she has an option, she would get paid for those days or she can bank those days or even work those days without pay. So there's a whole bunch of options she could take.
Just to be clear, she could only bank five of the 10 days.
Right.
But our policy also encourages people to take their, their, their full vacation during the year obviously. So we hope that's what our employees do. So one option Kathy may have mentioned is we could just, as a select board, approve this document in its entirety. And then this document would actually go in the public record and it would also go in the personnel file for each Colby and and Morgan, instead of making separate motions on each one of these things.
I mean, I think that's, that was right, that's what they do. That goes right in the personnel file.
Exactly. It would go into their personnel file, as Kathy said, there are no changes to the policy.
Okay, so you want to make that motion, someone?
I'm gonna make, okay, I moved that this document that we, that the personnel committee prepared on vacation as sick leave for Colby and Morgan. He's approved in its entirety. And then placed in each employee's personnel file and attached to the minutes of this.
Second?
Yeah.
Did you want to at least amend it because you have that half a day listed in there?
Yes, I'm thinking as amended, I will take this one half day vacation and the $23 per hour and just say three days. We talked about it, but we should actually amend it. And also I will add here, I think Kathy made a good point, that as far as, as Morgan's vacation is concerned, Morgan will have earned the 10 days vacation. And she may use that vacation for March. Okay? Thanks for that, Kathy. And then beginning January 1, the select board will allow for 10 days of vacation for all of March. Okay?
So all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those, okay.
Thank you very much.
This is grounds, the committee has said, Ken, do you want to deal with that? I mean, I can deal with some of them, but I can view, we know most of the time.
Okay. So during the storm on Friday, when they plowed the front of the post office, another large chunk came out of our cement sidewalk. So Michelle picked it up from the post office and put it aside and I called Ivor. He did kind of take a look at it, he had seen it and was cracked before, but this time it got caught and it's gone. So he tried to smooth out the edges the best he could. Joe and I, Joe put a cone there for now, not much can do in the winter time. But we need to address it in the spring, I know that was on our radar to begin with. Ivor did come up with a possible recommendation that we can talk more about and bid out maybe in the spring is tear up the sidewalk as it's falling apart and deteriorating with the salt. Put granite around the outside and then fill it in with cement. And he said in the granite, won't chip away and will protect our cement. So that's a possible, possible thought for the future, but that's where we're at at least on.
I also, I also recommend that we get a can of yellow paint. And when it dries up, paint that section there so it stands out. We have the comb, but the yellow is just kind of coming out, whatever, so. I'll, I'll get a can and spray it, and when it dries out, we can spray it.
Yeah. The flooring is going in tomorrow. Supposedly, it was supposed to be last Thursday. Then the storm, and then it was gonna be Monday or Tuesday, now they're saying tomorrow.
I see the doors here.
The door's been here since last week, they were hoping to put it in last week, but I guess that's going in tomorrow also. And Morgan took the liberty of putting up a sign trying to deter any traffic coming through with the flooring going in, but people can contact us or give us a call. We can have a come in the side door meeting here if it's really something they need in an emergency or anything, but we'll be here.
So is anybody taking a ride on any of these?
We have to get a lesson, we get a tutorial on it first.
It's inspected.
And then, yeah, and it needs to be inspected. Well, we start using it, so the inspection won't happen until after the flooring.
Voice water, I don't know, I didn't check with Morgan, but we sent a letter or email to Aaron and I don't think you've heard that.
No.
So we will resend another to Aaron asking where are we going from here, so we know what's going on. That's, that's a bad stuff.
We authorized Morgan to go in and just call Aaron.
Well, cool, yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get Morgan to find out what's going on.
Yeah, maybe correct.
I have a question for Rich, going back to Bill and Star. Would you get in touch or do you have an appointment to tell me?
If James is gonna either stop by, like, so he's through here, see if he can talk to somebody or he's supposed to be up here next week sometime, he was shooting for the 28th. And hopefully, I'll walk through here and see what's up.
I haven't seen him yet, he was starting to stop by.
Yeah, I'll hear from him, I'll probably towards the end of this meeting here. Just to confirm, but we did set up tentative date to the 28th.
At the same time when you do get, I'm gonna tell you, I guess the timing, I think this was outside of the contract for the elevators having hooked the heat pump back up in the lobby. Because our flooring should be done by next week, but I, I think that was not part of the contract deal, that was our deal. I think I can check with, if Butch is here tomorrow, I'm all season's on check and make, double check and outside the contract.
Where's the unit, is it moved here?
Yeah, it's in the basement, they, James took it out and laid it down there nice and covered it.
Last one back in the lobby, you ready?
He's going back in the lobby and he's straight on, on horn into all that open area, the whole still now.
Is it?
Yeah.
Zoom, as you know, our next meeting will be on Zoom. And hopefully, people will be happy. The hand we did.
Just, I just put it on there as you were.
Just for the reminder, that's. The, the, the BDCC letter. We only do that.
Nothing.
That's much of it. That's life, but I put it on the agenda, so we could all discuss it, so.
Really, way back, didn't they come and talk and they said, what is it?
Ask what that is.
The economic development.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Subits?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They want a letter of support in regards to becoming an economic development district.
So we would need part of all the municipalities.
Is this Wyndham Regional?
No.
Eric was here or is it, no, it's certainly all done.
You know, it's that organization that supposedly finds jobs for people here in Grand, but I'm not sure they do. So the question is, do you want to get, you want to just know the letter or do you want to give the letter of support, that basically what?
We need a letter, we're not at this time ready to support this adventure.
That's what I would agree with, that we shouldn't just be silent about it. We should say that we're choosing not to support it at this time, as Kathy said.
Has everybody agreed with that?
I bet you that's a positive experience with them, but I'm not. Dave, you want to give a vote?
I think they have done some nice things in other areas, like school gravel. Right here.
I think it's a different account, yes.
And it's, they have this, it's at the high school levels, but I don't know how positive that is. How many kids join in, I don't know that much.
Rich, do you think if we approached them any differently, we'd get different results? I mean, in your experience.
I'm also, although it results, you're looking for, if you're more to some major.
We, we spend over $2,000 for this. And it's gonna be an article, so the town may not end up with this issue.
Well, I think you've got to, you know, seek them out if you're looking for something specific. They put $7 out and small business owners, startups and all this sort of thing. Is it one of the things that their organization is gonna make it or break it, or make, make you or break you? No, it's just another piece of, based on a piece of a puzzle.
So they want to, so if they consent, we want to send the letter, they will not focus it in, in this now, or is that consent is?
Yeah.
We don't need a motion for this, do we?
Well, I think you should assign it to us, it's the chair.
So there's.
I don't think we need to give them a reason. That's our business.
Sure. Yeah, all right, voting's made, let me take a look at it, the campus out of the home. Do we have any other business?
Yeah, I don't think we have. Has anybody read the, one of our latest, the phones, all about the wells?
Wells.
Well, this is the first I've really read anything out, it's a big ask, if you read that. I mean, they don't have, you know, Ted Mills, they only drew a bill eight because of winter. A lot of those wells don't have any groundwater, you weren't able to go anyway, so they can't test them. I mean, really, you don't have one well that is a problem and the rest of them are gonna reclassify it at a lower rate. And, and just go home and all of that, and, and lose hair.
Those have 43 pages.
But then, 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 the thing that I understand is that if you read the, the results now and then you go back and read the old results, that exactly what you're saying, same there. So I don't, I don't know what they did.
This is terrible developments. I mean, not that they're still breeding water up in New Jersey. This is not good.
But you know, if they tested other wells around there, there wasn't a problem. It was just that one, one is a problem.
Yeah.
And who did it, public, Hatlins and another one working on the bay, they spent a ton of money supplying. They, they, well, we're not.
Because they, they somehow chose, we have to leave the school to test the PFA, CFOs, and they came up high. And you have to start everything well, and then what to, to, oh, yeah.
But I think the other thing we can do is afford. I mean, they're, they're testing the water, they're aware of it, so I don't know what more we can do. I feel badly for.
I don't know, but how much you want to get involved, because if you read that, the owner of the building is a Williams Superizer Union. And the contact is the ex-principal, Arty. So that's, that's not true anymore, you want to, so we changed us being the elders.
I, I would just let, see what happens. I mean, after I read that, I want to, it was very confusing to me.
It's time to understand, service.
I would pressure it the whole time, I could make it through the whole time.
Well, I, I started to read.
Yeah.
But I, I read the conclusions, and the conclusions, with the same power that they won't be able.
They identify as spot, there is, the way we identify, how do we get out?
So then we just, just ignore it for now, is that okay? We just ignore it, is that okay for everybody?
The, the well, the well report, I honestly did not see it, it must have just blown right by me, I'll try to find, it's in email.
We, and then we have the more concerns we can, you were gonna next year.
Yeah.
First of all, I see.
No, I, I've seen that.
But we asked for, because they were just dealing with a school and the school wasn't giving us.
Exactly right, exactly right, and then we asked to get them back home, but this was back over a year, I think. Okay, no, just don't public here, no public comment, also they cannot make a wish. The next reading is January 3, 2023, 16 years. And motion to adjourn, but Morgan, I just wanted to wish everybody a merry Christmas and happy new year. And this is the last week of, of the year, we were at the tour. Okay, John, John's thinking, John's thinking mostly during, probably only second here?
Oh, wait, 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 we forgot, we forgot one thing, just to check our clock. It won't take a second, but we really do need to have it in the November meeting. You'll remember that last year when we approved the personnel file for December 21, 2021, we send, revisit the comp time policy to December 21, which we did not do. And so Kathy and I are requesting this select board to postpone this review until the select board meeting on January 16. That be okay to you? Okay, that is just kind of work with.
What, what is it now, 120?
No, it's eight. All the definition is exactly the same, it's 80. I don't know.
You're right, I had forgotten that.
Yeah, yeah, so, thank you.
Or if I had a good question, enjoy it.